Everybody ready? Okay, we just got a couple more seconds here. I'm gonna wait till it's right time. All right, this is seven, it's, the time has arrived. It is 7:30. I will call this meeting to order. Please join for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have roll call, please.
Yes. Mayor Terry Wyman.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Sanger.
Here.
Councilmember Darryl Gardner.
Here.
Councilmember Tanya Lumen.
Here.
Councilmember Bruce Seelaw.
Here.
Councilmember Chris Weisenberg.
Here.
Councilmember Jackie Manwells.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, next thing on our agenda is to approve the agenda. Councilman Wells.
I move to approve the July 2nd, 2024 city council agenda as presented.
Second.
There been a motion made and seconded to approve the July 2nd, 2024 city council agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. The motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the consent agenda. Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move to approve the consent agenda of July 2nd, 2024 as presented.
Second.
Has been a motion made and seconded to approve the consent agenda of July 2nd, 2024 as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. The motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is citizens' participation. This is a time set aside for the public to comment pursuant to Resolution Number 2C-1996. It sets a time for public comment of five minutes for things that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to address the city council tonight? Seeing none, we will move on to board appointments and presentations. Vice Mayor Sanger.
I move to accept Michaela Johnson's resignation from Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee effective immediately in direct community relations to advertise the vacancy.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to accept Michaela Johnson's resignation from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee effective immediately in direct community relations to advertise the vacancy. Is there any discussion? Councilman Weisenberg.
On their bylaws for that board, is there extras on there? Like, like the shooting range has? I thought there was. And if that's the case, do we just have to move straight to them? Instead of advertising?
Vice Mayor Sanger.
Not, not for the adults, only for the kids.
Only for the kids, okay.
To respond further, if there is, it's not, there's not alternativ outright. You're right for the kids, and they are not mandatory members.
Right, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yay.
Online voting has closed. The motion passes with seven yeas.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the city manager report and staff reports. And Tom, I will turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council. To start off tonight, we have a staff report from our Public Works Director. And we'll invite Cody forward, and he's gonna update you on the lead and copper rule and the inventories and a few other items.
Honorable Mayor and council, I just wanna give a quick update on what we got going on at the city. As you know, we are trying to get our lead and copper inventory done. So we currently have a survey out that we're trying to get our residents to participate in, and we're hoping that we can get a lot of them to participate in it. So the surveys are, you can, anybody can pick one up here at City Hall or at Public Works, or one will be mailed out in the water bill and can be returned in the water bill. We can also have it done online at wildriskit.com. Let me see. And if you wanna complete, if you complete the surveys, you can either drop it off or mail it in to either City Hall or Public Works. All completed surveys are gonna go into a, basically a raffle for a Yeti Cooler to try to enhance people to participate in our survey. And we're hoping that we can get a good outcome out of this survey, so we asked everybody to please participate in it. The next thing we got is our quick skate update. The contract is almost in its final states to get door set up and going on their project, and we're very happy to see this kinda coming through. I know all of our water treatment staff is very excited about this. As it will probably help them not have to worry so much every night. The next one is we had a bid opening for Sage Creek Springs rehabilitation for the spring boxes. We had two really great firms put in for this. We had a chance to review the bids today, this afternoon, and we'll bring in our recommendations to council on the next meeting. And lastly, our, just a quick water update. We are still getting in about 2,100 GPM from our springs. We have not turned on our wells yet. Current spring water flows are still doing really good going into July, so we're very happy about that. Summer's looking good, and everybody can use the water. That's my report, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions from Cody? Thanks, Cody.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Cody. I've got several items tonight to update you on. First is a little bit of a staff recognition. Sherri Hickon in the Finance Department has announced her retirement. She has been with the city since 2013. A few things about her, we said she's an invaluable asset to the community. She is first to lend a hand to anyone that needs assistance. She does not know the phrase "that's not my job", because she jumps in and helps everyone in City Hall. She is a truly caring individual that does not want to see someone go without. She's very helpful, and we're gonna miss Sherri in the Finance Department. So if you see her, you can congratulate her on her retirement. Thursday, July 4th, the city will be hosting their annual fireworks. And they will be starting around 10:00 PM, and they'll be kind of across from the rec center where they usually are. They've been working hard for that. Thursday, July 4th is a holiday for the city, so City Hall and all the offices, the landfill, recycling center, recreation center, animal shelter, community bus, outdoor shooting range will all be closed in observance of the 4th of July. On Tuesday, July 9th, one week from tonight, we will have a special work session for council at 3:00 PM here in the council chambers. And this is one that we'd like to invite the public to, and it is concerning the draft water master plan. So we have a water master plan that is being worked on, and we have received a draft. And as part of those requirements, we need to have a public meeting to discuss. And so we've called a special council meeting at 3:00 PM. And George Mosher from the Wyoming Water Development Office will be here to present that information. And so that'll be your update on water. This week, we will not be hosting Music in the Park since it's the 4th of July. We will take this Thursday off. July 11th, we will be back at the park, and we will invite the Powell Brothers. They will be the performers, and they are recording artists out of Houston, Texas. So that should be a good show. We received a letter this last week from the Federal Emergency Management Agency, otherwise known as FEMA, concerning the flood zone.
Is this the same one, Tom?
It's the same letter.
Okay. I just opened mine, so.
And so to give you a little bit of an update about our flood zone, or what is now considered a flood zone. This process started in 2016. We had a initial kickoff and discovery meetings that occurred in 2016. In 2017, they gathered and developed all of the new data. They looked at it and analyzed it. And then there was a review with comments in 2018. And then in 2020, the preliminary map release was made. And at that time, FEMA identified a significant portion of the south side of Rawlins as existing within a flood zone. And we had a 90-day appeal and comment period, and the city did not send in any appeal or comments during that 90 days. And so the revised preliminary maps came out in 2022, and we just received a letter now that they are finalized, the maps. And so by their, by their calendar, we, the, they were made official in June when we got the letter. And we have six months for residents or occupants within the flood zone to secure flood insurance at that time. So there is six months. Now, we feel on the data that we received, we question whether it is really a flood zone or not based upon, not the data they looked at, but based upon the measures that the city has taken to divert a flood within those areas. And we feel that a lot of that was not taken into account, is how we feel, with the determination of the flood zone and the finalization of the flood zone. So the two items that were discussed that led to the determination as a flood zone, the first one is where Sugar Creek passes through Hogback Reservoir. FEMA believes that there is not a sufficient retaining wall to stop the water from there in a high water or in a 100-year flood. So they believe that if there's a 100-year flood, the way that it will drain, that there's not a sufficient structure at Hogback Reservoir, and the water would break through, come right down Sugar Creek and between the interstate, like our hill, down, and that it would eventually flood Sugar Creek, which would pool up in the south side. And they also claim that we don't have a sufficient diversion infrastructure so that if there was water coming, that we would not have the ability to divert it before it runs into the south side. And we believe as city staff that we have a structure, there is a structure at Hogback Reservoir. And we also believe that we have a diversion in place, settling ponds and those things where there is sufficient infrastructure to lead water away. So at this point, what our options are as a, as a city is we would, we would need to, to build our case, you know, that there is a sufficient dam and that we have the sufficient infrastructure. And we would need to prepare a document that is called a letter of map adjustment. And you've probably heard that as a LOMA is the acronym, L-O-M-A. And what we would need to do is, is fill out this application and ask FEMA if they would consider changing the map based upon the information that we would bring forth. We hired, and I don't know the exact date, but we have hired an engineering firm to help us with this in engineering associates. And engineering associates has done some surveying around Hogback Reservoir and those types of things, but the actual retaining structure is on private property. And what they are asking us at this time is to work on securing an easement so that we could take heavy equipment over to this structure and to be able to kind of move dirt around to kind of see if it is sufficient or not from an engineer's viewpoint. And to date, we have not secured an easement for them to access that. And so what they have, engineering associates have asked me to do, or the city, is to have an appraisal done of about a 10-acre lot and then offer the owners of that an amount for an easement so that we could take heavy equipment across to the structure so that engineering associates can look at it. And so to date, we have, have not secured, you know, the easement. I have checked with appraisers, and I have not been able to contact one yet. We're working on that. Okay. And so, so anyway, once that is secured, we will bring to council a, a potential easement to approve through council on that. So, so anyway, that's an update on FEMA, kind of where things stand. There is, in the letter that we received from them, there is some actions that council would have to adopt into ordinance that accepts that as a flood zone. So we, we will bring in some ordinance that is recommended by FEMA to council to put that into ordinance. So you can expect at some point, it is a lengthy document. We will probably do that in a work session.
Vice Mayor Sanger.
What's the timeframe on the LOMA? From when we received the letter? Or is there, is there a timeframe that we have?
From, from our understanding is that in December, the insurance would have to be secured that if we filed a LOMA between now and then, it would not be ruled upon until after the insurance needs to be secured. So I don't know exactly what the timeline that they would rule upon that would be. But we were told that it would be after December before they ruled on it.
So if they rule in favor of the LOMA, does the insurance have to go away?
If they, if they accept it, they do not have to purchase the insurance.
But they have to purchase it by December, but the LOMA won't be?
Correct until after. So they will have to purchase the insurance initially. But once the LOMA goes into effect and they change the maps, they will be able to drop the flood insurance.
I also believe I read somewhere where if they had bought the insurance and then the LOMA was accepted, they could ask for a rebate of that insurance. Is that how you took it to be?
I, I don't know that.
Okay. Well, it's, it's federal flood insurance.
We did look into that.
It's, it's clear as mud, but I think I read that someplace, but.
Yep, so, so anyway, that's where we were at. Our next step is the easement that we will work on, and then we will go over that with council. And we will get the ordinance to council to review. And like you said, it's a lengthy document. So we will probably have a work session to do that, so. Last night, the training was held. The tips training was held at the fire station, too. And we had 19 different individuals from Rawlins attend the tips training. And there is a 40-question exam at the end of that. And we, we looked at that, and according to our calculations, everybody passed. We have to send those to Cheyenne to be certified for the certificates come back. But we held the training, 19 individuals passed, and the liquor license was restored to Two Lot Bux Bar and Grill today upon fulfillment of that through the wishes of council. So I wanna thank George Phillips for teaching that and for Brian Market. They were, they were really willing to step up and to see that done. We had to change a few shifts and a few things for that curb, but they were willing to do that, and we did get all the way through that. On our baseball fields across from the rec center, this last week, through a grant from the Carvin County School District Number One Recreation Board, through a grant, the Golf and Sports Solutions, a contractor brought in 75 tons of clay dirt infield and 13,800 square feet of sod that they put into the softball field to make those improvements. It was, it was laser graded. It was laser graded. And if you get a chance to stop in there, it looks really nice, really beautiful. And if you have a chance to thank the Carbon County School District Number One Rec Board, it would be very appropriate because they've given us a lot of great support. And then the last thing that I want to share with you is we had a release that we partnered with the BLM on Rim Lake up there. And we have had the additional water flows this year to where we haven't had to use the water, you know, for our town supply. So we have diverted some water over to Rim Lake. And BLM has revitalized that area. And there is a lake. They have stocks and fish in there and a few different things for people at Rim Lake. And so we had a release on that. And there again, such a good thing for our community and for the excess water to go out there. So with that, that's my report.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate all the things that you've made happen and have participated in having happened and a lot of positive stuff. So thank you and the staff for doing that. Appreciate that. Does anybody have any questions for Tom? All right, moving on. City Attorney Report?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilman. Short update, just reiterating Cody's update in regard to working with a lot of the contracts that have gone through on the Gulf of Works projects. Those are actively in the final stages of negotiating with the other parties, with the different contractors and engineers to finalize just the nuances. A lot of the details are really getting the federal clauses that need to be in these contracts because these are, some of the funds are federally derived. So it's compliance with all those types of matters. Also actively working with all department heads and city manager on all of the issues that come up. One of the big projects that city manager and I have coming up is to update employee policies. And we will be presenting to council within the next few sessions an outline, a proposed outline on how we would like to begin making the updates to our current employee handbook as well as policies, which includes employment, employee policies, updating ADA, a lot of HR policies, and all of the new things that have come along in addition to other procedural practices that we have here in the city. Finance policies, handling billing and customer issues with the service departments with water sewer, landfill, and making sure we are aligned with all of the federal and state departments.
Cool. Councilwoman Lemon?
So are you going off of Stephanie Paulson's, the previous HR manager, who worked very hard to redo an employee handbook? Or are you starting from scratch?
Oh, no, we are, we're working within existing structures and we're not going to reinvent the wheel by any means, but we also want to streamline. We're going to take what's there. We're going to make sure that we have everything that we need to have there as well as what is reflective of our own culture and city.
That didn't really answer my question.
We're using what's there. We're not totally reinventing the wheel, doing some rearranging and updating policies.
When you say what's there, you mean what we're using now, not what she had put together?
No, that was, my understanding is that that was not accepted by council.
That's true. It was not.
It's not voted on. It wasn't even brought up for a vote.
It...
It was discussed, but it was never voted on.
Right. I agree. So it was never accepted by council. Councilwoman Garner?
So you guys don't waste your time. Can you guys bring that forward so we can vote on that one?
Absolutely.
And then if, I mean, because it's complete, and we just need to bring it forward. So if we did that, I think that'd be the best thing. Save you guys a lot of time because a lot of time was put into it already.
There are additional updates that have come about in regard to ADA, current workers in this act, several other things that we need to update and make sure that we have included. So part of what city manager and I would like to do is make sure we have the outline correct in regard to everything, that it includes everything. And then if what has been done before, put everything that is relevant that Ms. Paulson had done before, keep those or make updates as appropriate.
Okay, so you'll just be changing, you'll just be working on the one she currently has ready to go?
That is part of the framework, absolutely.
Anybody else? You have more? All right, thank you. All right. Next thing on our agenda is direction from city council to city manager. And does anybody have anything? Councilwoman Weisler?
I'd like to possibly discuss, the Fourth of July is a holiday. It's a Thursday, and I'd like to see if council would like to extend that holiday into Friday also and allow the employees to have a four-day holiday. I do understand that some employees would have to be on call and some entities within the city would have to be open possibly. But I think it's a great thing to do and show appreciation for the employees. So if that's okay with council, I'd like to see what Tom would think about that idea.
I think the timing is horrible to address that, but Tom?
The communication of that, you know, would be a little difficult to date before. I do know that requests have come in for that day off and probably half the workforce, I would guess about half, has asked for that off as a vacation day. The issues would be around the landfill coverage in a few different areas, but I can definitely work that out with staff tomorrow and get that communicated out if that was desired by council.
Councilwoman Wells?
I would support that. I think it would be a great thing we could do that it's easy to honor our staff for the holiday.
I don't disagree with that. Would one of you put that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion to allow the Fourth of July to be a holiday on Fourth and Fifth of July and allow the city employees to have that as a paid holiday off. With the exception of certain departments of the landfill noted by city manager, talk service.
You also might want to mention 2024.
2024, yeah.
Every year from now on?
Well, it can't be every year from now on because, right, yeah. It's just a 2024, so.
Okay.
Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded to make the Fourth and the Fifth a paid holiday for our city staff, noting some departments would have to either be on call or work at the discretion of the city manager. You accept that modification? Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Seelach?
So are we going to have a problem with some people in that because they have Friday and Saturday? Because like the landfill and all that, we can't shut it completely down and recycle? I mean, or could we?
How would we work that, Tom?
Well, for those individuals that are essential, on those days, we would either give them a floating holiday where they could take another day off, or we would have to pay them that additional day off in compensation if it isn't time. But there are several areas throughout the city that are essential that would have to work on the Fifth. But we would have to compensate them, as I said, either a floating holiday or with pay for that day.
And we would leave that to Tom's discretion, I guess?
Because some of them have two days if you don't afford a holiday. Some of them work Friday and Saturday, so, you know. And some of them work Friday, Saturday, and Sunday even, you know, with water and all that. So it gets in real hard, hard deal to divide out, you know. So everything's even across to what one person.
Honorable Mayor, Councilman, yes. For like the police force, the fire department currently, they have their floating holidays or it gets added to their holiday bank. I think in a lot of those positions, that's what we would look at for those essential employees.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
You're going to have to do a verbal.
Okay. All in favor of, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you, council.
Anything else? Direction for the city manager? I would just like to thank you, Tom, for getting that training expedited or done and all the other work that you've done, FEMA and all that stuff. I just want to pat you on the back a little bit. You've worked your tail off. We do need to have you bring probably a budget amendment forward to change the pay schedule for our financial person so that we can actually hire somebody because you're doing two jobs and it's not good. And I mean, you're doing a great job. I don't mean it that way. You're doing an excellent job, but it's just too much for you. And I would like to see you, I believe some of our problem is the pay schedule that we've allotted to that position. You haven't been able to hire anybody. So I would ask you to bring forth a suggestion for us to change that pay schedule and also it would probably be necessary to ask us for a budget amendment. Okay, anybody disagree with that?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? All right, seeing none, we will move to new business. Councilwoman Wells?
I move to approve a 24-hour catering permit for Christie's Inc. doing business as Michael's Big City Bar and Grill Liquor License Number 91 to cater the Sinclair Parko Centennial Celebration at the Town of Sinclair, Wyoming on Saturday, August 17th, 2024. This will be an all, an all-day event.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve a 24-hour catering permit for Christie's Inc. doing business as Michael's Big City Bar and Grill Liquor License Number 91 to cater the Sinclair Parko Centennial Celebration at the Town of Sinclair, Wyoming on Saturday, August 17th, 2024. This will be for an all-day event. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. A motion passes with seven ayes.
All right, thank you. The next thing on our agenda under new business is item B, which is approve the nonprofit ancillary contracts. Do I have a motion? Vice Mayor Sanger?
I move to approve the nonprofit ancillary contracts for the fiscal year 2025 allocations with Carbon County Economic Development, Old Penn Joint Powers Board, Rawland Carbon County Airport Board, Carbon County Senior Centers, Carbon County Child Development, Project Reach Cove, Boys and Girls Club, Stepping Stones, Volunteers of America, High Country Behavioral Health, and Children's Advocacy Project and Pet Partners.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the nonprofit and ancillary contract for the fiscal year 2025 allocations with Carbon County Economic Development, the Old Penn Joint Powers Board, Rawland Carbon County Airport Board, Carbon County Senior Centers, Carbon County Child Development, Project Reach Cove, Boys and Girls Club, Stepping Stones, Volunteers of America, High Country Behavioral Health, and Children's Advocacy Project and Pet Partners. Is there any discussion?
I have a question. Is this, are they, are we approving the numbers that were in the budget, the 10% decrease? Or is this what they asked for?
Honorable Mayor, Councilwoman Lemon, this is what was in the budget.
What was in the budget? Okay, I just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open. Online voting is closed. A motion passes with seven ayes.
All right, thank you. The next thing on the agenda is an executive session. Councilman Wells?
I move to enter an executive session at 8:10 p.m. per Wyoming statute 164405 to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law and to consider the appointment, employment, right to practice, or dismissal of a public officer, professional person, or employee, or to hear complaints or charges brought against an employee, professional person, or officer. Unless the employee, professional person, or officer requests a public hearing, the governing body may exclude from any public or private hearing during the examination of a witness, any or all other witnesses in the matter being investigated following the hearing or executive session, the governing body may deliberate on its decision in executive session.
Second.
All right, thank you. There's been, did you state the time?
8:10, yes.
8:10, okay. There's been a motion made and seconded to go into executive session at 8:10 p.m. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? I see you've opened online voting. Everybody vote?
Online voting is closed. A motion passes with seven ayes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
I'll just breathe.
Squeezing.
Swinberg.
Or not.
Okay.
I think we're dealing with a very complicated rate right now on some water stuff. So.
I don't think.
Four weeks are no longer.
No.
Third time.
Okay.
Right, you do.
There you go.
Breathe in.
Inhale, sir.
Good.
How much air?
Yep, all right.
Are you good?
Very good.
Yeah.
That's, yeah.
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to do.
Just like a cell, can you sell it?
Yeah.
What company is it?
Maybe you should be able to maybe scan that up in your computer or something.
I can.
Yeah.
I can't find how it's.
And that also.
Yeah.
It's like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's the general.
You know, it doesn't have a shits in it.
I'm sorry.
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 Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a huge.
Okay.
We are.
From what I remember, it's one of these.
Two.
I feel.
I'll see.
I see.
You know.
There you go.
Discuss.
Can discuss this.
I see.
So.
You know.
Kind of.
I think.
I'm just.
Does she want to play with it?
I don't know.
She's not true.
Okay.
She's still not.
She's.
The little chef is saying he's.
I know.
This is. This is.
It's like.
See.
Question.
Just thinking.
So.
Please.
We're.
He's not sure.
Because to me, if you make a.
I am.
I'm.
I'm.
Move.
I don't know.
It's a.
Yes.
It shouldn't be like four or five.
It just.
It should.
It should.
It should.
To me, that kind of goes with like.
What.
It's like.
I don't know.
I don't think.
I think. It's.
Has had to. Yeah.
It's.
So you said.
I can't. Sixty. I'm actually. So.
They. You are not.
I do that. So. Yeah.
Well, just like. I'm sure. To. It's like. Yeah.
Yeah.
Just like.
That's right. You know. This is. I'm. That whole situation. You. So. So.
So. That most. So. Which is somewhat careful. This is such. There's. It's what's up, so. See, like, how. It got.
I don't really like. It would be awful. It's.
And that's. Which more is. And. Yeah. I like. Yeah. And. So. Say. I'll be. Sure. Yeah. I'm gonna. But as if I can't think. You know. Can you give me? Yeah. No. Which are. Which are. That's. So. Which are. I don't know. So. It is much reasonable. So it's also my responsibility to be, because when I look at. I'm. And. Just like. Everybody. And. My. My thoughts about it are just like. I would. And. And we thought we could. And try to. Actually. Actually. That's why. So. Yeah. To. Yeah. It's. And. Yeah. I think. So. You. Oh, that's. I just. I really. Or maybe. This is. Oh, this is just. I don't know. I don't know. I just. I don't know. If I were. Really. To. You know. Seriously. And then. So. How are you doing? Yeah. So. Sixteen. So. Don't you. Yes. To this. And. So. So much. Nothing. It's just. Information. Yeah. That. It's. Yeah. Okay. So. Turn. Good. Yeah.
Oh, my God.
I think it's off the clock.
Yeah.
Oh, man.
Long way to the ground.
You ready? I already have my hand up. Just copying.
We're ready.
Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to come out of executive session for Wyoming Statute 16-4-405 at 8:27 p.m.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded to come out of executive session for Wyoming Statute 16-4405 at 8:27 p.m. Any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yay.
Online voting is closed and motion passes with seven yays.
Was there anything discussed in executive session that somebody found to be inappropriate? Seeing none, we will go on to approval of executive session minutes. Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the executive session minutes of June 18th, 2024, regular city council meeting as presented.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded to approve the executive session minutes of June 18th, 2024, regular city council meeting as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please open online voting.
Yay. Online voting is open.
Yay.
Online voting is closed and motion passes with seven yays.
All right, thank you. Next thing on our agenda is item B, Councilman Weisenberg?
I move to approve the executive session minutes of June 25th, 2024, special city council meeting as presented.
Second.
And a motion made and seconded to approve the executive session minutes of June 25th, 2024, special city council meeting as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, still open online voting.
Online voting is open.
Yay.
Online voting is closed and motion passes with seven yays.
All right, is there anything else that needs to come before this body? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting. The next meeting will be on July 16th, 2024, regular city council meeting. Thank you.
I love a short.
That's why I just said.
An hour.